Excuse me, everyone, it is Monday the 21st. Before we got into our meeting tonight, I wanted to acknowledge something that happened here back in September. September 7th, we had a shooting at the exit six ramp here in Manans. An investigation immediately commenced. And after just about a month, we put together a thorough investigation that resulted in the execution of a warrant. And we arrested an individual who is known, was known to police and, and is now going to be facing a multitude of charges. A gun was found at the residence that he was living in at the time. And as well as some drugs. So I just wanted to, the file for this case, which is now in the hands of Albany County, is measly this big. And so I just wanted to commend our two detectives, my case, Dan Braden, for putting that case together. I was here at five o'clock in the morning with, with the chief and we were sitting, listening in on the, the RDT team who gained access to his place of residence at the time and, and woke him up very early at about six o'clock in the morning. So I just wanted to congratulate them on a case that was executed perfection. So thank you both very much for that. So.
You, thank you. Well done.
Thank you for all that you do to keep the village safe. We really appreciate that. All right. Next, we want to move the Glenwood Road discussion of the street number changes, or I guess put it better, non-changes. So basically, after we discussed this last time, you know, we, we understood that the residents concerned about changing their physical street numbers. And we went back to the team that had initially met to discuss how we could get this accomplished so that something was aligned, everything was aligned. And lo and behold, the two parties who were adamant that we could only do this one way, seemingly reversed course and told us that, that us that we could do it however we wanted and just to let them know. So. I think it's fair to say they caved to pressure and we resubmitted a new list with, with basically adhering to the initial plan of keeping the residents' addresses the same as they are known as and maintain and maintenanceing the Albany County records on their end. So basically, the driving, the driving identifier will remain the parcel ID, otherwise known as the SBL number. And then we will just be adjusting in the clerk's office and then filtering on down to the assessor's office those numbers. So, John, anything further on that?
There was only one technical glitch with the whole thing and that's 30, the address for 30 Glenwood has two parcels, but there's also a 32. So they're going to be changing 30, 30 and 30A. And that's the only change that, of anything that, all the rest of the addresses are going to remain whatever the mailing addresses are. And I want to thank Mary and Nancy for their diligence.
Yep.
And being extremely patient with, with everything we, you know, we were going through.
So we'll just be communicating once we submit this list to the Albany County Clerk. Is that the next step?
We have to get real property.
Okay. So do, do we as a board need to?
Yes, we need to vote on it. I will make a motion that we accept, we propose the new tax addresses for Glenwood Road to be submitted to Albany County Real Property.
Second. All right. Got that out of everybody. Justice for the House.
It does.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of the October 7th meeting. So.
Warrant number 12, we have three voided checks that totaled $6,525. General, Water, $1,569.68. Sewer, $400. And there's also, that was total, that totals $85,850.67. What's not on your sheet? We had to do insurance because it was due by the end of the month and we got the bills today. So we, we rolled three checks for that. And that's for $41,231.68.
Could you say that number again? So. CDHP was the majority of it. That was like $38,000 of the.
And then the disability insurance.
For, one for disability for like. Do you have the register with you?
No, no. It's, it's, it was all, all insurance. And the other, and payroll number nine was $129,376.75. Now.
Still so.
I have a question. So two of these voided checks are pretty self-explanatory, but what is the one for Green County Commercial Land?
That was our Visa bill.
Yeah, there was, I think somehow we paid the Visa bill twice. We ran into a problem because Bill and Mary Jane were both coding things and there was two copies of it.
That is no longer happening.
Okay. I'll second.
All those are big.
All right. Do you want, um. We, we made the agreement that we were going to allow the, the police to go into the new retirement system. That was, we, we approved the, the monies for it, but we never actually approved the going to the plan. So I need a motion to approve for the, the police retirement system to change to 384E.
I'll second.
All those are big. Any opposed? We already did the transfer, so we just, this is codifying that we are, that we already approved the EPA contract. This just definitively makes it in the record that we have moved to that plan. Okay, thank you. Where are we going?
Um, Glenwood.
Okay. The village owns two parcels up on Glenwood Road. They're known as.
48 and 50.
48 and 50.
Oh, is the current, I'm sorry, the current tax, the proposed tax address are 51 and 55.
Okay. They're on the, as you're going up Glenwood, they're on the left side. Plan is to at least survey them and then initially I would like to see if we two abutted properties would like to acquire them. Depending on the survey. And, and if, you know, if, if not, then the village should put those, in my opinion, out for bid.
So I'm going to stop you right there. So those properties have always been that street's access to the back fields. Without that, they either, they would have to go all the way around and down the street to access that back park. It's always been one of the benefits of having those lands. I know at one part we've talked about revamping that back lot and we talked about potentially we could add maybe some parking there, which I think would be a much better use of that space. If we sell it and more houses go there, it just cuts access to that back lot.
So you're saying that the Glenwood Road people couldn't go down, it's literally two, three lots from the end.
And then you have to walk on a major road. So when I lived there as a kid, where there's, you're talking about the very top of the street where it's industrial and there's large vehicles accessing that road to get to the back fields. When I was a kid, the only reason I was allowed to go in the back was because I could access it without going to a major road.
What she says.
And especially if.
So I can tell you right now, selling it is off the deal.
So if we, if we, if, but if we were surveyed, you could determine, you know, there could be, there could be, well, no, hold on.
So the goal, hold on, this is not public comment. The goal would be to use the funds from the sale of a parcel or these parcels to fund the improvements in Oak Switzer Park. So.
But you're going to improve something that the people are then going to complain they can't access.
They can. I mean, I, it's, it's, you can't walk from those two lots to where.
Where there's a main road with no sidewalk or industrial vehicles.
Say that we can do public comment.
And I mean, it's, it's around the corner. So.
It's, so, okay, I walk my dog that way all the time. There are no sidewalks. The.
Again, that's part of the improvement of all of these.
But we don't own that road, just put a sidewalk there.
Yeah. The corner to that park is a blind corner and cars come flying around the corner. And there are plans that the board has looked at that would, to say to make that parcel the entrance to that park. I, I go and I cut through the, I've seen that. You were on the board. It was within the last couple of years. There were, that you guys did a, I don't know if you did a survey of the park or part of the comprehensive plan. There are plans that show one, an entrance on Glenwood to the park and an entrance or, or an entrance on Elmwood.
It was one we were, when the bowling alley was going to be. When the bowling alley was going to be apartments, we were going to give them the ease and the build the sidewalk, it's all from the bowling alley or, he's right.
Yeah, I was, just what I was going to say. The, the motion is only to do the survey. And I, I, I'm hearing what you're saying, but at the same time, you'd have to do the survey to determine that possibly you could, you could do both and still have a gateway entrance that's wide enough to, you know.
It's nearly an acre and a half in total. The parcel, parcels.
You can, you could certainly still do the survey and determine whether that's still feasible thing to do and provide that entranceway. I mean, that wouldn't.
So even if, even if we did the survey and the two abutters wanted to purchase a part of their strip, some of which, as I understand, they're using as if it was their own IRA.
Well, I'm sure.
And then create something down the middle i- if we maintain the access. This is to do a survey.
I, I would assume that, that the abutters to 51 would be interested in purchasing that lot.
Yeah, the abutter on the other side would probably also want to buy it because I'm sure that they don't want to.
Yeah. I mean, we don't want to assume anything at this point, but that, the point being that this is just to do the surveys of the property.
I, I agree that I think everyone on the street would prefer to have at least one lot left for an access to.
Well, it's ours, we can.
Well, I know, but to be left that way.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
And if, if, then if it does go to purchase, then I would buy the middle one directly across from my house and I'm like.
Being a dog walker on Glenwood Road, I am able to walk from the sidewalk into that area until it starts to become late spring and it gets overgrown. So I can't walk down that, I can't fit that path anymore. So I have to go around to the road. So, and it used to be when a lot of kids lived there, always, you could run right through there.
So Creighton Manning has submitted a proposal to do the survey for a total of $3,300 to determine the exact boundaries of both parcels. So.
I know. If I can make one comment, I don't know if it's anything to it. Just the talk in the street, I'd always remember when they were transferred from the Pope Switzer family that all that they donated was supposed to be left. But I don't know. That's just the law.
The law says that you're able to use the sale of park land as long as it stays within the park system.
Okay.
So it's utilized, so the sale of a parcel, for instance, there are separate parcels is going to be, the funds should be used dedicated towards the improvements in that park. That is allowed under state. Anyone want to move on the survey?
I'll make a motion to, uh, for the builds to have lots with SBL numbers 44.18 dash 3 dash 54 and 44.18 dash 3 dash 55. Survey by Creighton and a question for you, Tim.
I'll second that.
All those are big.
All right.
Or alarm system.
Uh, well, 250 Broadway Fire Alarm System no longer is up to its job. It is not monitored electronically like it needs to be. We got two quotes from two reputable companies to replace the fire alarm. Imperial was the one we felt best about and they're also the lowest, the lowest bidder at $36,400. This is going to be reimbursed under New York State Sandra Felsbeck's office. So. I'd like to move forward with getting them to get the system all, includes both, both sections of the building, this section and the, and the police section. And then it's going to be monitored. I think the monitoring cost is 50 bucks a month.
30 bucks.
30 bucks a month. But well worth fact that we don't have somebody sitting in the office for dispatch anymore. So.
I'd move to approve Imperial Systems Incorporated to replace the fire alarm system at 250 Broadway and cost $36,400.
I'll second.
All those are big. Uh, what's next?
So you're going to discuss the security upgrade to 250 and 250.
We're looking into some, one of the systems in addition to the fire that, that needs, needs some attention is unifying the access control system for this entire building. There are now two systems, one on the fireside, one on the police side. And so updating the system and adding some control points for, for access is something that we're looking at. Still waiting on a couple, couple of quotes to do that, but we'll bring that to the table next meeting. And then the police have gotten a quote right for the floor. Replace the floor. Do we have, oh.
We only have, we have two, we have to get three.
The floor where? In here?
Yeah. No, in the police, the police department, which is all carpet that's in there. And replacing it. One, I know one bit was twice the other. So that's going to be a relatively easy decision. We'll get a third one and then bring that back to the table. Uh, let's see.
I would, I was only having that. Your report.
We got the executed MOU with Albany County regarding the first wave of improvements at Oak Switzer Park where we got a grant of 17,000, 17,000. 19,000, 19,000.
Thank you, Bill.
It'll be following up on next steps to start that, that project and put together the team now that we have the MOU signed with the neighborhood. Uh, we received word from Ryan St. Julius that the Albany County Sheriff's Office has a system similar to what we use for, as Everbridge. And Molly has some experience with it and says that it's.
Yes, I, I just wondered if you got any answers about non-emergencies.
Yes, yes. You can set up different, uh, different types of emergencies or non-emergencies. Apparently Albany County uses it for filling time slots. So that's not. The only problem is Albany County does not want to roll it out until the beginning of next year. And our contract renews on December 14th. In addition, we're in a contract that expires 2025 December. So we have to stay at Everbridge another, you know, another year. And, and then we'll migrate over to where I can save ourselves $6,000. So. Uh, I've been working with, since our Glenwood Road renumbering project has worked. So there now that we can do whatever we want, as long as we communicated with the Albany County Sheriff and Albany County Clerk. We are fixing the fact that our DPW address is really one Oakland, but according to the Albany County Clerk's office, it's on Lincoln Ave, which I didn't know that Lincoln Ave.
Cause it's part of the Erie Canal. Erie Canal had an address up on Lincoln Ave. Cause if you look on the tax map, it goes the fire dump is.
Is that Paper Street?
Not even Paper Street. It's, it's there. It's our property, side of the street.
Not even a number on Lincoln Ave, just Lincoln Ave. So.
No, it's one, one Lincoln Ave, but it's one Lincoln Ave all the way over.
Sorry to send a letter saying that the address is actually one Oakland. I'm going to change it. So that's another one we got done. The initial draft of the sidewalk 88 assessment came in this morning. I'm still looking through it. I'll share it with the board tomorrow morning. Uh, it's, it's about 70 pages and it's a draft. So I guess I'll take a look at it and make some comments on it and then send it back to the group to continue that work. Uh, we submitted our annual MS4 certification, six months. We followed on, what was it? Draft plan, I guess. Six month requirements.
It's a survey.
Lobella helped us prepare this and along with Dave Adman. Said that was submitted on time and I think we'll comment back on that. There is a playground equipment dedication at the Skyler Inn on the 24th, the 130. Regeneron donated, I guess, a big play. Yes.
What was it, Dave?
The 24th of 130. Regeneron donated this playset for the, I guess, the courtyard. And so they invited, they invited me. So in turn, the board can be invited. So it's just to dedicate the playground and. And Regeneron, I don't know if anyone saw the Albany Business Review, but Regeneron is having a continuing growing impact in our community. And there's a lot of really cool information. I'm going to try and summarize some of it. I'll make a copy of this for the board to, to take a look at. And it just talks about the growing presence throughout the half region, including the parcel they purchased here in Manans. I was a hard walk-through with Don, Chief Lieutenant and Lalo Delgado and Dave Adman at Section C of 430 on Broadway. It turns out they're not just putting 100 people as they initially planned, but in Section C, they're going to be putting 300 people in that to begin with. So they also started renovating Sections A and B. And that's a, I think, a million plus dollars renovation, a million dollar renovation to, to approve that section.
Beautiful inside.
Yeah. You were there too.
Yeah, I was there.
Sorry, Jack.
Absolutely fantastic what they've done.
The zone is going to be doing the catering cafeteria. So I asked for a badge.
What is, what is it expected to be completed? So they were issued a CO, I don't know, a month ago.
And I then, and the number of cars is growing. So.
That is great.
Yeah, the guard tower is gearing up to be fully staffed, I think 24/7. So. Uh, our lead line survey has been submitted. That was due on, I missed the October 16th throughout New York State. We submitted the information with Lobella through Lobella and are continuing to work on that. Most of the residents in the village are, are not identified as leg, but still working on that as required. We purchased some new trash cans for Gator Spick Park. During some of the concerts, it was evident that we're, we need some overflows for trash and recycling. All that food that fire company is selling. So we invested in some new trash cans. This is all going to be reimbursed in the sand layer from Phil's next office. That's it.
When, when, when are those supposed to be in?
They're here. They misshipped. So two of the black ones should have been glued for recycling. We have plenty of trash can. We have, we can split up the recycling and the trash. They went over to Tony and his crew at Manans Auto. And he's going to donate us a pipe and spray pan, recycling, official recycling. So good. Good thing that helps over there for that. Are we going to install them before winter or wait till spring?
I, I think we're going to wait till spring because we're going to put them in the garage for now because we're going to have to put a little concrete pad down.
So we'll. I see. Sounds good. Okay. Rusty, Kevin.
Uh, yes, the only thing I have really is that, uh, following up on Little River Project, I made a call to CP Rail Kansas City. I had managed to reach their community planning department, left the information to look at them possibly being able to turn over an old piece of rail spur that they have down in the area that we're interested in. Which a lot, a lot of, you know, these railroad companies have done for rail to trail purposes to see if they would take this property, which has been cut off from any viable use since they built 787. And there aren't any, I, I did let them know there aren't any tracks there and they said they would give back to me and that's, that's, that's where it's at right now. So I'm sure they're doing their research on it. But I don't see any reason why they would have a difficulty with that. So hopefully that'll take some while.
I saw Kevin had a, Kevin Franklin had a, a pretty good history of that.
Oh, yeah.
Always very interesting.
The only thing I would like to add is with Veterans Day coming up, we have a few flags in the village that are calling calls.
Yep. I made a list of a bunch of them today. So Mike, Calvin and Dave are out this week. So as soon as they're back, we'll, obviously kind of get this Thursday, Friday.
Yeah, just a few on words.
Yeah, it's really bad. So, yes.
We're probably just going to take them down because they come down after Veterans Day anyway. So, and we'll take down.
Mike and I talked about it. I'd like to put them back up and, and take them down after.
Go order more.
We have a couple.
We have a couple. We don't have enough of it.
All right, well.
But it's up to you. I mean.
As best as we can, leave it up till after Veterans Day.
I don't have anything. I'm looking forward to the truck or treat.
Yes. We need volunteers for truck or treats. So if you're creative and want to decorate your car and at least do, Molly.
Um, one thing on the backside of the garage at the park where the dumpster is, there's your feet all over that wall.
Yeah, we saw that we're going to, we'll probably be taken care of in the spring because we're going to repaint that hole.
Um, the other thing is the Manan School PTA is holding their Fall Fest on November 2nd from 1:00 to 3:00. It'll be in the lower part of the school. Um, the other thing is the Manans School, P T A is holding their Fall Fest on November second from one to three, it'll be in the lower part of the school. That's all I got.
How was the, um, you know, how the.
Trash.
Trash.
Uh, I had one coming this weekend, so I did not, but from what I saw in the pictures, I think it was success.
I talked with Courtney, we're gonna work a little bit more closely next year to try and minimize the stuff at the end that goes.
Yeah, where it goes to me.
Yeah, so we're gonna try and work, I told her, if, if, you know, I think, I, I felt the board would encourage if it. Took a little extra effort on our part to get that stuff to somebody who could actually use it, whatever's left of it, then us throwing it in the dumpster, then. You know, that might be at least something to explore, so.
Uh. That wouldn't be too difficult at all to be put out.
Yeah, so I mean, like Courtney, I, she said she, she bagged up some, some of the clothing at least to get back to somebody who can, who can use it. So that is where I get is, but there's no reason to be tossing bread or, or next to baby strollers and stuff like that, so. I just told her, look, I'm, I'm open to talking about that and figuring it out.
Yes.
The la, the first year they did it, one of truck price of like a hundred curb alerts on, uh, what is that? Did I just say Craigslist? Like all this stuff was out in front of the school, I mean, just, a lot of it went.
Right, yeah. Done.
Um, October tw-. October twenty-sixth is Truck or Treat at Albany Rural Cemetery from five to, correction, four to five thirty. Our Truck or Treat, Truck or, can't talk, Truck or Treat. And, um, is on October twenty-seventh at one forty-five, uh, the, the minute, the market. They, the parade gonna start at two and I got word today that they're gonna start doing the Brookside Tree trimming tomorrow. And that's all I got.
Oh, seven zox?
Seven zox, yeah, I actually have one other thing. Get, um, the police department's gonna be doing Toys for Tots again.
Oh.
And they're gonna, um, will be having, uh, donation bins at the, the village office. And that, the police department wants they, they get the bins in.
Uh, speaking about that, I participated in a, uh, a presentation. Uh, at the Toys for Tots, I guess, storage depot at, um, Shaker Logistics up in Waterford and, uh. Part of the Marines annual drive is for literature programs and. They had a donation of books, a million dollars worth of books that, uh, had. They partnered with, uh, our police department and the Manans School to, uh, to distribute this million dollars in books. Some of them have hundreds of copies of a different, you know, a, a kid's book and others have just enough to circulate, so the, um, so. Uh, Jen Superintendent of Manans Schools is going to be working with the school librarians. Librarians at Manans Public Library and librarians around the area to distribute those. And possibly even whatever is left over to, uh, to, to have in a book drive and, and seeing, uh, if the public are even giving them away, so. Uh, that was great to be a part of, so. All right. Other comment, now.
First of all, Brian, I'd like to thank you for giving me a written reply on two of my proposed projects.
Rock and roll.
I think now, I think now that you've studied my proposals over, I think you're gonna be taking both of those projects into consideration, which I hope it really happens. And I'm glad to got heard from the village of Manans on both of these proposed projects I've worked hard for. All right, now I still observe lawns on some residential properties within our lower part of the village. Manans are still having overgrown weeds, lawns and brush. I've been requesting that the village board pass enforce a village resolution requiring all property owners to mow their logs. Every seven or eight days unless it's bad weather. This is a law that's similar over in the village of Scotia. Property owners gotta mow their logs every seven or eight days, so I'm asking for, asking for that. Oh, proposal been passed by the village board. And number nine, while sweeping up one short bleaker near the guest dugout, the low step of the bleaker where spectators place their feet has been loose. Now, has that been fixed, Don, you know?
I told Mick, Mike, I'm not sure if they did or not.
I did step by, but it seems like it's been fixed, but I'm not sure, I would check it again. Cause we don't want anyone fall down, get injured, and then our village could be facing getting slapped with lawsuits and. We all know that lawsuits are costly, slow and time consuming for profit. We simply can't afford to go through any lawsuit. And like, and I just already began my new job as the official groundskeeper for Manans Kickball Organization, beginning with early September. This year, which I'm glad to do. Now, there are two safety signs posted on utility poles, one the yellow dead end sign on East Kemar Road. And the other one stop sign on West End of Clifford Road. They should be removed and then placed in with new signpost, which should be aluminum. Now, while driving on Broadway here in Manans, I recently observed one fire hydrant at East End of Glenwood Road. Next to Broadway Junction, it's finally been cleared of brush, grass and weeds. Plus, I wish to thank the Public Works guys for getting the job done. One more thing, while in the men's room next to the pavilion building, I observed one paper towel dispenser. Not having no paper towel, so I reported the prop to the village office and I, again, I'd like to thank the. Public Works guys for doing their job to fix. And thank you for letting me speak on these important topics.
Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome.
Hey, Bill reminded me of something that I just want to add, uh, we, we do have a propping maintenance, uh, requirement. And we were, we had talked last time about doing remediation of one eighty-two man wrestler.
Meeting later in the morning.
Oh, excellent, okay, thank you, thank you, follow up, I appreciate it.
Anyone else, public comment?
I think we did all the calls.
All right, I have one more thing, Alex, the movie, the, uh.
Oh, thank you for reminding me, um, the movie night was actually kind of fun, so, uh. The Her movie was actually successful, so we're gonna try and do another one sometime in December, um. So, we're just, um, Bill and C Y O and Manans Youth Sports is gonna try and figure that out, so. Let's make for the morning to remind us there's thirty some actual list, pretty cool. Anyone, anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Uh, we don't have anything.
Nothing for that discussion, okay.
Uh, motion to adjourn at six thirty-eight P M?
Second.
Have a good night, Jim.
Thank you, Bill.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. I do.